Welcome to Centenary United Methodist Churches Bible Study, "Coping as Christians." We're using the workbook, "Coping as Christians," by Maxie Dunham. And you're welcome to follow along in that book, or to just simply have paper and something to write with as we take notes, and we'll do some written exercises as part of what we're doing. You'd also probably like to have a Bible nearby. And remember, any time during the video, you can hit pause to take notes, or pick up another pencil, or whatever you need to do. This is Lesson 4. This is the lesson on stress. And if you have missed the previous lessons, just go to our website, or go to our Facebook page, and you can pull up the previous lessons. We're so glad that you're with us today. My name's Robert Gorrell. I'm the Senior Pastor, and I'm especially glad to be sharing this material with you, because it's been very, very helpful to me. I've been through the study many times, and I just keep coming back to it over and over again. And it seemed to me that it would be especially fitting, while most of us are sheltering at home, and we have so many restrictions on our life, to just talk about, how do we deal with challenges in our life? And how do we, as Christians, bring our faith into play with those challenges? Today, we're going to be looking, in the beginning of the lesson, at Daniel, Chapter 6, which is the story of Daniel in the lion's den. And I'm sure most of you probably know the story. Daniel is a righteous man. He's a Jew. He's faithful. Some guys were jealous of him, deceive him, and deceive the king. He's a prisoner in a foreign land. Deceive the king, and make it look as though Daniel is a bad guy. And so, by the king's order, Daniel is thrown into the lion's den. We're going to start reading in Chapter 6, Verse 16. "So the king gave the order, and they brought Daniel and threw him into the lion's den. The king said to Daniel, 'May your God, whom you serve continually, rescue you.' A stone was brought and placed over the mouth of the den, and the king sealed it with his own signet ring, and with the rings of his nobles, so that Daniel's situation might not be changed. Then the king returned to his palace, and spent the night without eating, and without any entertainment being brought to him, and he could not sleep." I think that's a really interesting story, right? Because Daniel is the guy being thrown in the lion's den. He's the guy that's been falsely accused. He's been set up by some evil people, and now he's the guy being thrown into the den with a hungry lion. And yet, if you follow the story, Daniel really handles the stress of that, and the burden of that exceptionally well. The king, on the other side, he knows he's been tricked into passing this law that has caused Daniel to be thrown into the lion's den. He knows he's been used, and he can't back out of it, because in the kind of political system he's in, once the king gives an order, the king can't take it back. But Daniel is his friend, and he recognizes Daniel as a person of faith. And even though Daniel believes in a different God than the king, the king is starting to doubt his own faith, and really looks at Daniel as somebody who has a relationship with God. And so, the king is sort of helpless in this process, and these things take place, and Daniel is thrown to the hungry lions. And the king is left to wrestle with that all night long. And the story is so descriptive, the way it's written in the Book of Daniel. The king, he can't eat. There's no entertainment that will distract him. He can't sleep. I don't know if you've ever had a night like that. I bet you have, and I know I have, many times, had nights like that, where you couldn't eat, and there was nothing that would distract you. Nothing on TV, not a book, not anything. And you lay there in bed, and just couldn't sleep, feeling the stress of that time upon you. That's a lion's den situation. It's really an experience of really being tested as a person, and as a person of faith. It's really something that pushes us to our limit, and a lot of us, right now, are having that experience. We're caught in situations that we didn't control, and we didn't have any part in, and we didn't have any input into. Because of the coronavirus and the restrictions we're experiencing at work, and at school, and in our personal life, our social life, even in travel and things like that, we're feeling that stress. A lot of us are worried about how to pay the bills. Are we going to be able to get food? What's going to happen? Am I going to be healthy? Is my family going to be healthy and well? Am I going to be able to work? Those kinds of things are weighing all of us down. And so, today, we want to kind of think about these two guys, and why they're affected the way they are. Daniel is facing the immediate threat, but he does that with great faith. The king, on the other hand, who at least would seem to be the person who would have all the power, actually feels helpless, and he feels the burden of decisions that have taken place, that he had some role in, but he didn't have control of. And now, those things are playing out in a way that's crushing him with stress. It's very interesting to me, this January, all of us Oklahoma Methodist pastors have a new insurance, and it's through the denomination. It's a denominational health plan, health insurance plan. And I've never had an experience like this. I mean, just almost every week, they're sending me information, and little tests you can take on yourself, to evaluate your stress, and how you're handling your stress. It's because we've recognized that pastors are under a lot of stress. And to be honest, pastors don't always handle it very well. We tend to deny it. And so, these folks from our insurance company, an insurance company that's produced and enabled by our denomination, are trying to deal with that, and help clergy find ways to look at their stress, measure their stress level, evaluate it, evaluate how they're handling it, and look at solutions for how to deal with it, which I think is really important. And we'll talk about some of the things I've learned, just since January, about stress. I went by the district office recently, and I looked at my class of elders, the people I was ordained with 35 years ago. There were like 32 of us, and there's only eight of us left in ministry. And I was the oldest guy in the class. It was very telling, and I know a lot of those stories of those people I was ordained with. And after years of stress, or even just a few years of stress, they felt like they needed to move on and do something differently. So, I can say that, at least in my profession, we don't handle stress very well. We don't know how to do that, and it's something that I have to learn about every day, and maybe your experience is similar. Maybe it's something you need to know more about. The insurance company that's helping us and working with us is doing that, because they recognize that there's a direct connection between that emotional, spiritual stress, and our physical well-being. Think about stress, and how it makes us feel. The king, in the Daniel story, couldn't eat. He couldn't sleep. Because of the emotional stress he was experiencing, his body just shut down, and seemed to stop working. It's really stated well in one of the Psalms, in Psalm 16, Verse 9. "Therefore my heart is glad, and my soul rejoices, and my body dwells secure." I love that. "And my body dwells secure." The psalmist is saying that when we're feeling the burden of stress, and that's weighing down on us, there's a physiological event that happens. And when we're relieved of stress, or when we're processing stress in an appropriate way, our body reacts to that too, reacts in a positive way. And that stress shows up in our body. When I was doing my residency as a psychotherapist, we had a little line we used around the hospital, that you'll have stress, and if you don't deal with it, it will show up somewhere in your body. That was just almost like a golden rule, that when people came in, clients came in, and they were under incredible amounts of stress, at work, at school, in their relationships, if they didn't deal with it in some way, eventually, we would see it take on a physical element. It would affect their body. And that was just a rule that was never broken, actually. I mean, it just always happened. A few years ago, we were in Israel, and we do that on a real regular basis, and I'm really familiar with the territory, and what to expect. And we were at Caipus's house, which is up on a high hill in Jerusalem. And you come out of Caipus's house, and there's a steep incline up to the buses in the parking lots. And I'm a healthy guy, and I always handled that really well. I got about halfway up the parking lot, and I said to stop and rest. And people that were 25 years older than me, 30 years older than me, were just passing me by, and scooting right up the hill to the bus, and I couldn't do it. It was a very strange experience. And finally, I was able to get back on the bus, and I remember thinking to myself, well, it's because we're traveling, I'm tired, maybe I'm having some asthma issues, in a foreign country, there's pollen and stuff near me. I mean, a thousand excuses. I went by a couple of months, when I got home, and I never checked it out. I just pushed it to the back of my mind. And I went to see my doctor, who's a really great doctor, and he's worked with me over a chronic health problem over the years, and really helped me with it. And he gave me all the tests. My blood pressure was perfect, and my cholesterol was perfect. All those things were good. I was exercising, losing weight, and he said to me, "Something's not right." And he just kept grilling me on the stress I had in my life. Him asking all those questions about stress was giving me stress. But he just said, "There's something not right in your life." And this is a guy that knows me, and knows my body really well. And even though all the tests looked good, he sent me for further tests. And I went to a cardiologist friend of mine. I'd never been to a cardiologist before, and he did a test, and he said, "I need you in surgery, eight hours from now in the morning." And I said, "Really?" And he goes, "Yeah." He goes, "I'm even afraid for you to go home, to be honest." And just a few hours later, I was having a heart operation that saved my life. I had denied stress in my life. I had denied physical stress. I had said that I was handling it. I was capable of taking care of things. I had ignored a major warning sign, and I just had denied everything that was going on, and it almost cost me my life. Great doctors saved it for me. So, one of the things we're going to really talk about today is acknowledging stress. It's so important to recognize the stress in your life, and to talk about it, and to unload it, and to take steps to change, and to deal with it. Latin, "stricure" is the word from which we get the word "stress." Stricure means to be drawn tight. And I don't know about you, but my experience of stress is exactly like that. I feel drawn tight. My world closes in emotionally, and spiritually, and physically. I think my field of vision even starts to narrow when I'm under intense stress. I don't talk. That's one of my issues, or my personality traits. The more stress I'm under, the less I talk, and that's not necessarily helpful. In mechanics, stress is used to describe the external pressure on something, and the internal strength to balance that pressure. I love that image, that there's external pressure, and then, and there has to be the right internal strength in order to meet that pressure and stay whole. When I was a little boy, I grew up around boats. I mean, my dad was an avid fisherman, and every moment he had, we were on the lake. And my wife and I have owned boats over the years. It's just a part of my personality. We go sailing every few years in the Caribbean. It's just part of who I am. And I can remember being a little boy, and we were on our boat, and my dad had given me a little toy submarine to play with. I was fascinated with the idea of submarines going under the water. And I asked my dad, "Why our boat couldn't go underwater?" Right? Just one of those questions little guys ask their dad. And my dad said something that, over the years, has really meant a lot to me. He said, "Son, not every boat is a submarine. Submarines are designed to handle the extra pressure. Not every boat is like that." That doesn't mean that a ski boat's not valuable, or a cruise ship's not valuable, or an aircraft carrier, or a tugboat. They're all valuable. They all have a role to play. But understanding the kind of stress and pressure that each can deal with is extremely important. The same is true in our lives. Everybody's different. We all handle stress in different ways. And it's very important, as my dad would tease me sometimes, and say, he would say, "What kind of boat are you?" It's really important to know that, to know if you're a submarine, or you're a tugboat, or a ski boat, or a pontoon that really sits up on the water. It's important to know how you deal with stress. What's your unique way of doing that? And that's part of really acknowledging stress. So, I'd like you to take your paper, or your journal, or notebook, and take a moment, and list three things that have given you stress in the last three months. Three things that have been stressful for you in the last three months. I'm going to give you a moment to write that down. All right. And then, I want you to think about, as you look at that list of things you've written down, and think about Daniel, and think about the king. And you just might write next to each of those things, "Did I respond like Daniel, or like the king?" I would say, having to close the church, and not have worship with everybody, is one of my biggest stressors. And I would have to say that, in the beginning, I reacted like the king. I couldn't process it. It was hard. It kept me awake. I couldn't rest. I couldn't sleep. I couldn't eat. I didn't want to watch TV. But over time, I've been able to change that. So, think about those things that are giving you stress, and just write out to the side, "King or Daniel? Which way did you react to those things?" Okay, let's continue to talk about acknowledging stress. Maybe you've heard about the Social Readjustment Rating Scale. You may not recognize that title, but you've probably heard about it. It's a little scale that gives a numerical value to change in our life. A divorce might be 100 points. Losing a loved one might be 200 points. Having to buy a house might be 75 points. And they've developed a really interesting system whereby you can go through and add up those points for the changes you've had in your life, and see where you are on a stress scale. The basic tool that they've developed with the Social Readjustment Rating Scale is to help us understand that change itself is a cause of stress. And that's really important to acknowledge and to know. And that can be good change or bad change. I mean, you may have gotten a big promotion at work, and your salary's doubled and stuff, but there's all this new stuff to learn and to do. You may have just entered into a great new relationship, but there's always those questions, "Is this going to be like previous relationships? Is it going to be good or bad? Where is it going?" And this scale, it doesn't really evaluate whether those things are good or bad. It simply gives a numerical value to those changes, and there's a number there, a couple of levels, which they tell you. If you've added up enough points, and you're in this level, you're in a major danger of being overwhelmed by stress. So, understanding and knowing that one of the major things that causes stress in our life is simply change. And you might think about the changes you're going through right now that are stressful. If you want to, you can put them on your list. Another one of the causes of stress is the pressure to perform. I can remember when I just got out of seminary, that I would go to church on Sunday morning, and every Sunday morning, right before service, the first service started, I would have to go to the bathroom and throw up. I just had that pressure to go out and do a good job, and most of the time, I wasn't even preaching. I was a young associate in a big, big church, and I was reading the Bible, or leading a prayer, that sort of thing, and the senior pastor was preaching. But I felt that pressure so much, I couldn't keep breakfast down. Now, that pressure to perform, to do your job well, a lot of it shows up in parenting. The pressure to perform, to be the parent you really want to be, and the parent that you know your children need you to be. A guy named Friedman, who's a great psychoanalyst, coined a phrase, and an idea, and it was later developed by another analyst, D.W. Winnicott, who's the guy that cared for and oversaw the care of all of the children who are refugees in World War II in England. And he coined a phrase that is really powerful, I think, in parenting, particularly for mothers. It's a phrase, "The good enough mother." And Winnicott's idea, building on the work of Friedman, Winnicott's idea was that you just need to be good enough, that in fact, if you try to be perfect, you actually will start to damage your child, and your relationship with your child. You have to find that level that is functional and helpful, but where you still leave enough room for the child to try things, and fail, and have to start over and learn from their lessons. I remember being a new stepparent, and saying to two new stepdaughters, "My image for our relationship is, I'm going to try to be a good uncle. My job is to make sure, at the end of the day, that you're alive. I'm not your dad. You have a dad, and you have a mom, but that's going to be the role I'm sort of aiming for in your life," to really understand that. Now, my relationship with them grew into much more than that, but that was a great place to start. And think about your life, and the relationships you have, your work, the school, and that pressure to perform. Where is the level you really need to be at right now? Right? Be able to identify that. Another one of the causes of stress is to have wants denied. In my family, as I mentioned in a previous lesson, there's been a lot of discussion on the phone between my wife and daughters about nail care. I did not realize that that was such a stressor in life. They can't go to the nail salon and get their nails done, and they're very concerned about that. Well, first, I sort of chuckled at that, but lately, I find I'm starting to wonder when I'm going to be able to get a haircut. Right? There's some of those things that are wants that seem small, but as time goes by, they're pretty powerful. Just to be able to walk in the door of the church and see familiar faces, that's a want I have that's being denied right now, and it causes stress in my life. What are some of those wants you have that are being denied right now? Another cause of stress is denying our feelings. Like me, when I came back from Israel, and I was feeling things weren't right, but I was denying that. I was denying how I felt about it. So often in life, we say to ourselves, "I've got to soldier on. I've got to push through this. I've got too many things to deal with right now. I can't deal with that thing that's causing me stress." And that actually amplifies the stress in our life, and makes it greater. Think about those places in your life where you're denying your feelings. I think it's really good, as we talk about these causes, change, the pressure to perform, wants denied, denying our feelings. I think it's really important that we acknowledge those. Writing it down is one way that you acknowledge it. Just simply to put it on paper is a way to acknowledge it. I like to think about the fact that all of the stress in my life can be brought under the lordship of Jesus Christ. Stress is diminished with the awareness of the indwelling of Christ in my life. Daniel knew his God. That's why, when he was in the lion's den, he didn't have that kind of stress compared to the king. He knew his God. He had a personal relationship with God. The indwelling Christ in my life, I can have a personal relationship with Christ. And knowing that Christ and I have that relationship, I can turn areas of my life that are stressful to me, particularly those I have no control over, I can turn those over to Christ, and even say, in my mind, or in a journal, "Christ, I give you X, and I'm going to ask you to deal with that for me," and to place that under the lordship of Christ. So, now, look again at your list of the things that are stressful in your life, and just put a check mark by any of those that would be changed if you turned them over to Jesus, even just a small part of it. If you could simply allow Christ to be sovereign over that area, that stress area in your life, just put a check by those things right now. Acknowledging that you have the stress is important. Acknowledging that you can't handle it on your own is equally important. And of course, acknowledging that Christ has the power to deal with it is also a part of getting to a better place with that stress. Now, that's where I really want to talk next, and talk about next, and it's really important for us to understand and admit that we have limitations. Sometimes, we live our lives, particularly in American culture, as though the answer is always just out there. We just have to find it. We have to read the right book, or watch the right TED Talk, or take the right medication, or find the right treatment, or the right strategy, read the right management or business book, and we'll get it figured out. That's a part of the American culture, but it's not true. All of us have limitations. Like my dad would say, "What kind of boat are you? Are you a submarine, or are you a pontoon boat?" We need to recognize who we are, how we individually deal with stress, and what our limitations are in dealing with stress. I have served several churches, and have always prided myself in staying there to get the job done all the way through, not asking to leave, or wanting to leave, or anything like that. There was one time, I stayed in a church, and the year after I left, I looked back and said, "I should have left earlier. I was done." But it was so comfortable, and the congregation liked me, and I liked them, but the church had plateaued. And so, I was at another church later on, and I was committed to the fact that I was going to stay there. I was there for a long time. Stayed there as long as I felt like I was helping the church get to the next step each year, take another step. And then, I started to feel like we were plateaued again, and that really, and not anything negative, but just that my ministry there was done. And I went to my bishop, and talked to my bishop about it, and the bishop was just adamant, "You need to stay. There's things there that have to get done. You're the guy who can get it done." And really pushed me to stay, and talked me into staying. As the months went by, I recognized more and more that this was not where I needed to be, and it was time for this church to have a whole different approach, and I wasn't the person to do that. I would go to the bishop, and talk to him, and he would say, "Oh, no, you've got to stay. You've got to stay." And I remember, we were in Israel again, and we were at the Dead Sea, which is a place of real barrenness, and emptiness. And I was sitting there one evening, after the turing had ended, I was just sitting there by myself, and looking at that great wasteland, and that sea that's dead. Nothing can live in it. And I was thinking to myself, "This is how I feel." Now, for a congregation to grow and be healthy, the pastors have to be growing and be healthy too. And I just looked at that and said, "You know, I've been at this church a long time. I've given them my best, but I'm empty. It's time for me to do something else with my life." I looked at where I was in life, and really thought about, "This is probably how much longer I'm going to work, and these are the things I'd like to accomplish in that time as a pastor, and as a church leader." And I sat down and wrote my bishop a very personal, deep letter. I'd never done that before with a bishop, or district superintendent, or anybody. I never... I never really sat down and, and done that. And, uh, and, uh, it wasn't about my strengths, but it was about my weaknesses and my vulnerabilities, uh, which I, I don't think I had ever really thought about in a deep way. And, uh, and I, I sent that letter to the bishop and, uh, uh, he's been to, to Israel, he's been to the Dead Sea, and he knows that place and understands the images that I was using. And, uh, we sat down and he said, if you really think it's time, then it's time. And I said, it's time. And it was a very hard thing for me. Um, um, and a very hard thing, uh, to process. Cause in our system, you work with the district superintendent, you work with the bishop, uh, you work with the staff parish relations committee. There's a lot of people involved in that kind of a decision. Uh, but to be able to work through the process and sail along the way, it's, it's time. Time for a change, uh, was really tough, but important. So to know your limitations and to recognize your limitations. You know, I've been in a situation where, where there was just so much stress. I, I look back now and realize that dur, during that time, I ignored my family. Uh, I ignored my friends. Even when I was with them, I wasn't really with them because of the stress that I was dealing with at work. And, uh, it's really important to sit down and have that kind of evaluation in your life. To look at all the aspects of your life, work, school, uh, your relationships, if you're parenting or, or maybe your relationship with your parents and other family members. You know, where are you? And, and are there areas in which, uh, you've reached your limit? And you need to move on in a new direction? And I can tell you that, that writing that letter and just reflecting on it and saying, I needed to change as much to myself as anybody, was crucial in my life and, and really changed my life. It's really important as a Christian to recognize that not every need is a call. I'm going to say that again. I hope you write it down. Not every need is a call. As Christian people who, who care about the people around us, who care about the church, who care about ministry, uh, we experience a lot of needs. We see a lot of things, uh, at work, school, church, our community. There, there are a lot of needs, but every need is not a calling for us individually. And we need to take time to allow God to, to speak to us, to help us identify where we're actually being called to do ministry and, and to live out our faith. Not every need is a call. Philippians four can, contains some of the, the most, uh, I think reassuring and touching verses in the Bible. And if you look at, uh, particularly 11 and 13, uh, Philippians four, 11 and 13, these are verses that, you know, people wear on T-shirts. They, they have up on plaques in their kitchen. You remember, may remember Philippians four, 11. "I am not saying this because I am in need, for I have learned to be content, whatever the circumstances." That's St. Paul. "I have learned to be content, whatever the circumstances." That's a, that's a powerful statement, isn't it? That's a, that's a Daniel in the lion's den statement that, you know, even in the face of lions or whatever the, the lions are in my life, I, I can, I've learned to be content. And, and that's often coupled with verse 13. You jump, we jump from 11 to 13 and, and 13 is probably one of the most, uh, uh, deeply felt of all Bible verses in the New Testament. "I can do all this through Him who gives me strength. I can do all things through Him who gives me strength." Um, you know, "I can face whatever I need to face," the apostle is saying, "because I have Christ's strength to rely on." What's interesting, uh, to me at least, uh, I hope to you, is that we, we, we do 11, verse 11, and we do verse 13, but we kind of skip verse 12. And verse 12 is really important if you want to understand what Paul is saying. Verse 12, "I know what it is to be in need. And I know what it is to have plenty. I have learned the secret of being content in any and every situation, whether well-fed or hungry, whether living in plenty or in want." Paul is acknowledging that there are times, he has everything he needs. He has all the tools. He has all the resources, but there are other times he doesn't. There are other times he's in absolute need. He doesn't have the resources. And those are the very times he has to remember to rely on, as he puts it, uh, "through Him who gives me strength." This verse is not about being powerful. This, uh, this passage really is about being vulnerable, recognizing, uh, recognizing our limitations and knowing and understanding what they are. And, uh, and allowing God, uh, in Jesus Christ to have a role in our life. One of my, my favorite senior pastors I ever worked for, David Thomas, used to say, "We've got to give God this much room to work in our life." You know, we think we can take care of everything from here to here, but the truth is we can't. So somewhere along in here, we've got to leave some room to just turn it over to God and, and let God, uh, have that dominion in our life. Look at the stress items on your list. Would any of those things change if you recognized your own limitations? Just take a look at those things on your list and, and, and maybe put a big L next to any of them that, that would change if you just recognized your limitations. One of the books that I, I read as a young person that was really powerful to me was Alvin Toffler's book, Future Shock. And, uh, there's a lesson in that book that has stayed with me for decades. It's really crucial to who I am. It's crucial to my spiritual health and it's crucial to, to my emotional and physical health. Uh, at least when I acknowledge it and recognize it in the face of the stress I face. Um, Toffler said, "Humans are highly adaptable to change, but not infinitely adaptable." Humans are highly adaptable to change, but not infinitely adaptable. And, and what Toffler is saying is, we can handle change and we can handle the stress that comes with change, but we can't do that over and over again without paying a price. Uh, there's a limit to what we can handle. Uh, we're very good at handling things. We're very adaptable. That's, that's part of what God wrote into our DNA as human beings, but there is a limit to that. And there, there are times we have to really recognize those limits. And so Toffler talked about this thing that, that is incredibly important to me. He says, "We have to create stability zones in our life. That's how we deal with stress," Toffler wrote. That we have to create, uh, these stability zones in our life. These are safe places in our life where we can count on people and we can count on the things that will support us. We all need these places. I, I think of them as rooms where, where we know we can go in and, uh, and we're safe. And the people there will love us and support us. And, and, uh, there are things that are familiar to us that are encouraging and helpful. Pets, favorite books, uh, maybe a favorite chair, uh, whatever it is. But we need those, those places in our life. And, uh, and sometimes we're so blessed to have those just given to us as gifts. I grew up in a home that was, was a stability zone for me. It was always a safe place, always a safe place. Um, some of us didn't have that and we have to learn to create those things. Uh, while you're writing and journaling, uh, take a moment and list a couple of stability zones in your life. Where are they? Who's, who's a part, who's a part of that support for you? And I hope you have those places. Now, if not, I would encourage you to consider creating them. Uh, I'm a part of two clergy sharing groups. Um, I never really wanted to do that, but about, uh, about 15 years ago, I was recognizing, I wasn't always dealing with, with work very well and stress of ministry. And I was invited and I wouldn't have done it on my own initiative probably, but I was invited. And, and I participated in, in two different clergy sharing groups. Uh, one, in one group, we've been through everything together, uh, everything. And we've been together over 15 years now. Um, and that's a, that's an important part of, of my life, to be in a, a place where I can talk to other pastors and just, you know, really, really let it out. And, uh, I encourage you to find that place or create that place in your life. A lot of us right now are feeling the pain of losing one of our stability zones. For many of us, the church is that safe place. A lot of you have shared that with me recently, and I know the heartache you're going through. Uh, that while we're connected through videos and media, uh, we're missing that face-to-face time together. We're missing hugs and, and encouragement and, and, and caring, shared face-to-face. Um, I know that that's, that's really tough. And, and I encourage you to find ways to connect with, uh, your fellow Christians right now, on the phone, on the internet, our church. We have shepherding groups. And if you're not a part of one, call the church and, and we'll, we'll include you in a group. Um, I can even imagine some of those groups going on after, after this whole pandemic thing is done. Uh, but, but find that place and create that stability zone. Uh, the last question I have for you is where are the stability zones in your life now? Where are they right? And do you tend to them? Do you need to care for them? Uh, or do you need to create new ones? I've had the blessing of, of reconnecting with some of my extended family over this period. Um, you know, we'd send a birthday card or a Christmas card or something, but we never really spent much time, you know, communicating. And I've had the blessing of, of reconnecting with some extended family. It's, it's been amazing to me. It's just been so powerful. I want to encourage you to think about the, the stability you have right now, where, where you can deal with and process your stress. And, and if you don't have those or you don't have those in your life, then invite Christ to lead you, uh, as you create those in your life. Next, uh, on our next lesson, we'll talk more about stress and how to deal with it and how to process it. I hope that you'll be with us and invite others to, to watch as well. Always when you watch, uh, be sure to check, like, that helps us a lot. And, uh, pray that God will bless you. And I look forward to the time when we're all together.